All right, it is 7:04 and we will reconvene in a public session. I apologize for this delay, the council had a need to go into closed meetings beforehand and it took a couple months longer than we thought. So here we are, Councilor Friedrichs will not be here this evening. Next week, we have one certificate of appreciation to recognize Charlie Kemp from the Department of Public Works on the occasion of his retirement. Are there any discussion on that or comments?
Yeah, I believe Department of Public Works staff will be presenting, it'll be Tammy presenting that recognition. Public hearing is, is this one?
It is light.
Wow, look at that.
We've been beating you all for a couple of months. Just ease up a little bit.
Look how happy the staff is.
It's a quiz, not a test.
Alright, so we just have one public hearing. It's a resolution to consider two additional chapters of the Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines for the Herndon Transit Oriented Core over by the metro. One is for signs and the other is for landscaping. And Bryce Perry, Deputy Director of Property Development, is here with the staff report for us.
I'm actually gonna pull up the documents here. That's impressive that you know all of your substructure. It's pretty impressive for a... It's not too bad. Okay, so the Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines for the Herndon Transit Oriented Core, the H-Talk Guidelines, the document was adopted in 2013. There were two chapters of the document that simply said to be added at a later date. It is finally that later date. The two chapters before you now, the signage chapter and the landscaping chapter, were those two missing chapters. Real quick recap on exactly what the guidelines are. I know you all dealt with some recently when we reviewed 5x5 Herndon Parkway, but I just wanted to reiterate. The H-Talk Guidelines really are one tool in which the principles and the objectives of the H-Talk master plan are implemented, the design components of that plan. Of course, it's a very important tool for staff and you all, Planning Commission and Architectural Review Board when evaluating the design of our various redevelopment cases that come before you and staff. And also really important tool for developers. It's a good way to articulate what the expectations are for the town, for the quality diversity of design, for architecture and for urban design and landscaping design. Just goes my important developer. As with the rest of the documents, these two chapters were drafted by town consultants, urban design associates did the signage section, and Ponchi and La Quatra Associates did the landscaping section. Of course, we'll carry close to the staff on the development of those. It has been a multi-year effort on getting these two chapters before you all. Within that time, recently, we've taken it to the Architectural Review Board at a special session in November of 2018, and went to Planning Commission in April, this past April. And all throughout the process, copies have been provided to all of the property owners and their representatives in the H-Talk. And of course, we notified all of those stakeholders by mail and by mail prior to the ARB meeting, the planning commission meeting, and into town consultants. We haven't really received any comments, so thank you for sending this over. Couple questions we got, but that was about it. With, and I'm gonna get into each chapter here in a minute, but I just wanted a couple more things to go over here. With each review of the draft, first by staff, then by the commission, ARB, planning commission, we essentially collected all of the revisions and put them, and created them and added in the mid-order radish sheet that was included in the staff report, slash the staff report. Of course, the idea there is that we can organize and list all the changes and then at the end of this process, we'll go back to the consultants and get them all changed at once. Of course, that's a money saver and a time saver for us. So when you're looking at these, when you're looking at these two guideline chapters, keep a close eye on those rad sheets too, because there might be some of the comment that you might think of that has already been sort of addressed initially. And lastly, I just wanted to point out that this is, it's very timely for us. Of course, we've already seen the development plan for 5x5 Herndon Parkway, but now we'll be getting into probably a site plan for that development, Architectural Review Board application for that development. And where we are, we do continue to have a lot of development interest in the end of H-Talk, we are expecting enough submission of the development plans on point in the near future. So we're gonna be using these guidelines a lot coming up. So I have the signage chapter up here. The purpose here really is not only to regulate all the different specific types of signs that are allowed in the H-Talk, but give some guidance to the overall collection of signs across the entire neighborhood. We wanna, of course, reinforce the urban environment, we wanna create the sense of place, we wanna make sure that the signage is able to do that, that's dynamic, and in a way to do that, that it's cohesive across the entire development. We wanna make sure that there's a diversity in signage and that there's real creativity in the way these signs are designed. So that essentially is the design philosophy that's written here. The table of contents for the signage chapter is really a hierarchical, broad, specific, it goes through the philosophy behind it, then it gets into a handful of objectives, then it gets into standards that cover all signs in the H-Talk. It has to be material and placement, in fact, means of fabrication, means of illumination, and then it starts to get into the specific sign standards for each sign type. There's 14 different sign types. And of course, as with the rest of the document, there's a heavy reliance on both graphics. You'll see a lot of perspective renderings to show where the different signs can be placed, and to identify each of the signs, and then precedent images. So we like precedent images so we can show not only the reader, the type of sign that we're talking about, but also give them a good example of the type of sign that would comply with the standards that are here. So I mentioned 14 different signs, sign types. It's, I'm not gonna go through each of them here. It is a pretty good diversity though, with sort of ground floor signs, signs on canopy, signs on awnings, sandwich board signs you put on the sidewalk, big tower signs that are meant to be seen from the toll road and everything in between. For the sign standards, they might not be exactly the same as to what type of standard is between two of the signs, but just as generally it deals with where it goes, how big it can be, how it's lit. And that's essentially the most, the three most common standards across all of them.
Bryce, this is so well done. I mean, it's, there's not a lot of room for interpretation here. It's really, if I'm trying to build over at the H-Talk, it's pretty clear what kind of signs I should be talking to you guys about, which is key.
Well, that's what we hope to achieve here, although it is always tricky when we're dropping signs. Yes, I will say that for the sign chapter, the errata sheet, there's not that many comments and a lot of them are really minor in nature, a lot of them are just ways to clarify the standards that are in here, it's not allowed to change any kind of standards that are here. And then, let me open the landscaping one. The landscape chapter is a little bit more meaty. It's divided up into two main subsections, one is connections, one is spaces. Connections deals with streets, both public and private in the H-Talk, and spaces deals with your pocket parks, your plazas, and your pedestrian only passages. So there's, there could be mid-block passages, and of course, there could be the promenade, there will be the promenade, the connection between Herndon Parkway and the metro station. So with each of those subsections, there's an overview, let me jump to connections overview. There's an overview that sort of gives that design philosophy and real basic objectives for that subsection, or in this case, for connections, so for public and private streets. And then it gets into the dimensional standards and the graphics to support those standards. So we have, we have plan views, we have section views, we have axonometric renderings, and all of these really, they all show the same thing, but they're, what they're doing is that they're setting the dimensional standards for how wide the tree verge is, where the sidewalk goes, where the benches should go, the bike racks, the lights, et cetera. And as with the signage, there was a lot of reliance on precedent. So that everybody understands exactly what, and we'll get to it eventually, exactly what we mean, good examples of what we mean when we get to it. Once we get past the dimensional standards, we get into specific guidelines regarding surface materials, finished materials, and then beyond that are guidelines regarding site furnishings and lighting past that. So, and so it's the same for, same breakdown of subsections between the connections and the spaces. The only difference really between the two is for connections, it's the graphics are all the streetscapes. And for the spaces, the graphics are, are just possible, possible designs. So with connections, it's a little bit more prescriptive, this is what a streetscape should look like. With spaces, we didn't wanna design, we didn't wanna specifically design what a park might look like or a plaza might look like, really because we don't know what the sizes we're dealing with. And we just don't, we think that the developers can probably be the most creative in how to do that, so we kinda let that part is a little bit more open-ended. At the end of this document, at the end of the landscaping chapter, there is a section, a subsection on sustainability, sustainable practices. Jump to that, here it is. And this gets into, there's, again, there's like some basic overall guidelines for different types of environmental sustainability practices, both at the ground level and at the rooftop level, because the open spaces will be on both. And it gets into some detail about some best management practices for stormwater management, such as green roofs, blue roofs, and on-street stormwater management. And then it has a very specific plant material palette that goes through all the different species that make sense for this area, makes sense for an urban environment. It's native plantings, it's drought resistant, it's all, and it's a real diverse palette. And I think it's like the last four or five pages, there's quite a few species that it lists. For the proposed revisions to the actual draft document, what's in the errata sheet, there's a lot more comments for the landscaping section. And most of them are, again, more attempts for the clarification, real minor comments. There are though, a few more substantial, I would say, revisions that are in that list. One is adding a connections design for the Shiverland Run private street that runs along the south boundary of the H-Talk, right up along the Dulce Toll Road. That's going like a, that street is gonna have the toll road on one side. So we, and after going through the process of 5x5 Herndon Parkway, we essentially already know what that street's gonna look like, we know the dimensions that we're dealing with, and we wanna make sure that there's a real robust both pedestrian and bike connection down there. So we wanna just go ahead and design that and include it in this document, like all those other streets that are included in here. That needs to be added. The other revision is providing more specific guidance on the design of the promenade. Promenade is probably gonna be one of our most important open spaces in the H-Talk. It's gonna be the town's front door from above the metro station. We wanna make sure that that's a really well-designed, vibrant area. So there, there's some, there's a couple pages here that are dedicated to the promenade, but we really wanna make sure that there's... The way it's described now is that it's a little bit more, actually, a little more prescriptive than we wanted, talks about, you know, how it's, a planner should go here, and a tree should go here, and we actually, we wanna get away from designing the promenade, we just wanna add really, really strong guidelines that the developer can follow and the developer can figure out how best the design can really fit. The developer is gonna have a better capability to do that than we can in this document. The other notable change in the list of amendments, let's see, oh, adding guidelines for historic references in the streetscape and the plazas, and public art, and other types of features that can be considered public points. There's not a lot of references to either one of those in this current document. Again, that was another kind of learned lesson from 5x5 Herndon Parkway. We wanted to really make sure that we get, it would be more helpful for staff if we had, and the planning commission and board and the council, we had language in here specific to adding full points, whether it's our order or historic references, or something else. And lastly, the other change is actually setting specific site furnishings for private streets. So we have our Herndon Streetscape manual that governs all the various site furnishings specifications for public streets. We don't have anything like that for private streets. So we're gonna use this document for all the private streets in the H-Talk, which we're gonna do all the streets outside of Herndon Parkway, World Atry, Center, and Metron Street. Wanna actually have the document say that these are the types of benches that should be used throughout the entire district, these are the types of trash cans that should be used, these are the types of streetlights that should be used throughout the whole district. And again, that's the, the point there is to make sure that it's consistent across the entire district. We're not going, we just wanna really hit the most common site furnishings, like trash cans and benches and streetlights, and I forget if bike racks are in there or not. And then leave all the other more specific site furnishings for planters up to the developers so they can customize their open spaces for each of their developments, but yet they still have the same bench across the entire neighborhood. So that's not in the document currently, we have all that included in the errata sheet. That's all I have.
Questions or comments for staff on this one?
Sure. So this looks great. Did you, did your team design this, or did you hire someone to put this together?
We hired somebody to do this.
Okay, that's what I thought, which is great, it looks really good. I guess my question is just, there is a lot of content and a lot of detail, and so how much commentary, like one thought is, do we need to continue this? Because it does feel like there's a lot of detail to this for folks to, particularly the public, right, to look through? And whether it's a big deal if we continue this next week, just to give folks more time? And I guess the second related is, how much feedback do you think is, I mean, we get the feedback we get, but, you know, how much flexibility, I guess, do we have to adjust things if folks do come back to us? What are your thoughts on that?
The document is still completely open, it hasn't been adopted at all, so it's really, is open, it can be tweaked as much as the town council would like it to be tweaked. I think that there's probably a, well, we need to make sure that we're still sort of relatively consistent with the rest of the document, that's still the master plan. If it gets to a point where there's substantial changes, the council may want to take it back to the Architectural Review Board, the Planning Commission. But I don't think, as long as all those things are achieved, I don't think there's a limit.
Okay. And, I mean, I love that we're ahead of this, but at the same time, it doesn't feel like there's this huge rush, so I just wanted to put that out there, that I think potentially continuing this, it is such an important part of our town, and it's only 38 acres, but it's, we are gonna see a lot of development in the next several years, and this is the framework that's gonna be used. So I think making sure that folks really look through this, so we don't have any questions, not any questions, but so, you know, so folks really feel like they've been included and embedded this, because there's a lot of content and detail to this. So, thank you.
The only two places that we are updating right now are these two sections, is that correct?
Correct.
Just making sure I could, yeah, knew what I thought I knew.
Yeah, on the signs, I liked the fact that you have all shapes and sizes. Our most creative challenge with the BCA when I was on it was carpool, and theirs is not circle. It is not square, right angles, and they brought up numbers guy in that showed us that they were not covering any more square inches than a square one. So it was awesome, I was real impressed that he did that. So those type things will be considered with the new guidelines, that it will be just the square inches, it doesn't have to be square, I saw some circular, I saw other different shapes.
This document doesn't actually get into how a sign is measured, that's zoning ordinance. And zoning ordinance still has it at right angles proportionally.
Oh, so they still need to get a variance.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe, that would be the only thing that unless we are saying those aren't appropriate and we don't wanna use those signs, that would just save one step on a business having to jump through that other hood, should they have a non-conforming shape, if you will. Maybe they have a triangle.
How in the world did the T-Swap ever do that?
Okay, so we'll make a note of zoning ordinance, perhaps looking at that.
I mean, that'd be the only thing on signs, because I know if you've got a logo and that's what your company's using, they're not gonna wanna put it in a square or a rectangle or something like that. As long as you're doing it, include that. But I liked all the information you had about the plantings, and really trying to push the native plants and non-invasive, as well as the non-pervious surface or stormwater, that's really great.
Other questions or comments? I do like the specificity, I think that was the goal when we did our downtown pattern book, was to make it not guesswork for the developers when they came in, and we're trying to achieve the same thing here at the metro station. So I think a lot of great work has gone into this.
Did you get much feedback from the development community at all with this?
Okay, then you say basically, "Thank you."
We sent out, we sent out all of the drafts to everybody in the H-Talk, and we emailed them back and said, you know, "Did you receive it, did you have any comments?" And we emailed them a second time, we emailed them a third time, asking, "Did they have any comments?" And again, the only, we got a couple questions, more process-related than any that...
Maybe they're all waiting for next week?
Yeah, that's essentially what happened.
I did get contacted by one, but it was, "Do we have to do anything?" I said, "Not unless you change, not unless you redevelop." Okay, fine.
Jen, so can you go back to the sign one? So just something really minor, but on page 88, which, I'm gonna use that page.
And yeah, the pages are a little quirky.
The pages don't really make sense, I know, but...
Yeah, the one of them...
So just some of the visuals to me are, I mean, they look pretty, they're just, the print is so small, right? And I guess there's not much we can do, because that's why I was asking, I assumed it wasn't your team, I thought you said that we hired for this. And then when you go into more, when it goes into more detail, right, you can see there's 14 signs here, but then they only, the next one only shows the eight, and then they, there's not one that shows kind of the smaller version of all the different types. So there was a few little things like that, but, and even the last one with the Dulce Toll Road of where you could put him, I mean, again, the visuals are just really small, and to me, it's not super clear all the differences of those.
Is it as small when it's on an eight and a half by 11 page as it is on our screens?
But aren't people gonna look at it digitally a lot?
Well, I'm sure they will, but maybe not necessarily on an iPad.
Right, but my question still stands, because it still doesn't show the detail of this, what I was saying. And I just, is that the intent, or that's just, you see what I mean?
So the first comment about the, we have page 88 that shows all of the signs on the building and where they're located, how you identify them. And then the next page shows just the signs that are on the ground floor. So the eight that are listed here are included here.
Yes.
So what is it that you, what is clear?
My question is, the first page shows 14, and the next page only shows eight, the ground floor, which actually misses a couple.
And there is no 14 yet.
And just that there's, yeah, it doesn't, and I guess that's just the nature of it, because the other ones are for the, mostly the bigger stuff, but...
Right.
But it would be very small if they put everything, because 14 is pretty way up here on the top of the building.
No, I know, it is on the building, no, all 14 are listed on that page.
Actually, I didn't see either, it's just apparent.
Yeah, I know, that wasn't, that wasn't the question.
Yeah, sorry, distracted. Okay, we can work on clearing that up. And I agree with the comment about page 93, there is no reason why these are as small as they are, we can increase those on page.
Yeah, that page to me, even when I blow it up, still just seems unclear, and the, yeah, I don't get the differences of all the things they're trying to show. But I know this isn't my line of work, so maybe it's clear to someone else, but it didn't make sense to me.
Just two quick questions. What sort of feedback are we hoping we get from the public?
We didn't receive any feedback from the public at Planning Commission or the Architectural Review Board, so I'm not sure, I don't know what to expect, if anything. In the past, when we did the rest of the document, almost all of the public involvement was with the H-Talk, it's been called first. There might be, I don't know, when you start talking about signs as large as some of these signs are, I'm sure there might be some thoughts about, you know, whether or not, how visible it'll be, whether or not they'll be visible for residential properties or established I certainly feel like, as, how this is written, that that won't be the case, but in the past, it's like...
That's a great document. There's a spelling error on page 45.
I always have just one.
You look at those up.
I like the idea of green and blue roofs, but blue roofs, it's staring at me. Can't believe it'll work. But I think it communicates the spirit, and I think the desire that we're looking for. So I'd be real interested to hear folks speak up and give input to it. I'd be amazed if no one contributed anything to the next public hearing. Nicely done.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Okay, thank you very much. We have one general item, which is a resolution to approve an agreement with Fairfax County Water Authority authorizing an engineering consulting study at a water pumping station to reimburse Fairfax Water for the cost of the study. And Tommy Chastain, Deputy Department of Public Works Director?
See if my assistants come. Yeah, send a card. All right, I'm here, as is Bob Etters, our operations engineer, in case I can't answer any questions. So we are here talking about water capacity and a pumping station. What I'm going to do is give you kind of an update of where we are on our water. So in, as you know, last year, we purchased an extra 1 million gallons per day of water from Fairfax Water that brings us to a total of 5.7 MGD. And the thing, what we're looking at and we knew about was that we would need a way to get that extra 1 MGD. extra one MGD through our, either through our current system or some other alternative. So we would need a, or it is essentially a new point of supply to meet our future demands. So in 2016, our utility master plan had this route coming from the north of town to bring that extra one MGD to town. So that involved quite a bit of construction in the, at about a six point one million dollar cost to the town. And that would be working with Fairfax Water as well since they are a provider. And in talking with Fairfax Water more, more recently, the idea of using the twenty-four inch water main that runs through the WOD trail came up and it is essentially a win-win situation, I think, for, for all of us and that, that we'd be using this system, which is how we used to be, how the town used to get water up until, what was it, 2014 Fairfax Water took it over. But the reason they quit using it is because Fairfax City could not handle water for themselves, us, and Eastern Loudon. So essentially, in order to use this, we're going to have to have a pumping station. And that is what this agreement is with Fairfax Water, is for them to do an engineering study to look at a pump station. And the location that we're, they're proposing initially, granted, they're going to look at more than one location, but the, right behind HPD is where we're looking at for this one. However, this study will also provide us with a good footprint of location and provide information on any floodplain or permitting issues we may run into. The reason we're looking at this, just so you know, is the further east we go, the, the better it is for us. We can pull off from anywhere west of there. We'll have enough pressure after the pump station to supply the entire town instead of using our current system and vaults. So I will, so our recommendation is to approve this. This is a hundred and seven thousand dollars, up to a hundred and seven thousand dollar engineering study to look at the pumping, water pumping station. And essentially, the, I didn't go over that very well, but the cost of the pumping station using the water main, the twenty-four inch is about three point four million dollars, which is considerably less than the original plan. It is a planning number, but we're fairly comfortable with it. But it'll get a little more fidelity if it goes along. And this is, the, the money was included in our FY twenty CIP, so it's not like it's anything we weren't aware of. So, so anyway, any questions? Questions for Tammy? Anybody?
Just, so we're, we have, we're adding a, a pump station. How many do you currently have? How many do we have?
We have no pumpings and pump stations for water.
That's incredible.
This would be maintained by Fairfax Water.
Yeah.
We don't, we're really prepared to take that on and they would prefer to maintain that as well as the water main.
It's nice to have a flat town for the record. Really helps with the pumping.
Yeah. Anybody else? Other questions?
And this, just to make a point on, this main is very nicely positioned for HDOC. So where that water's coming in, it's in the center of town. We can branch and get it to HDOC much more efficiently than if we're coming in from the north.
Yep.
So this, this is a win, when Tammy says a win-win, it's truly a win-win opportunity for us.
Yeah.
Where it's located, sure.
Awesome. Other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you, Tammy. That brings us to roundtable. Who would like to start us off? Anybody?
I can just say, I got nothing this week.
Okay. Please?
Nothing.
Jen, please.
One sec.
Okay.
On this month, we had a feedback meeting. We got an update on the, the overall bicycle network master plan, which is moving along.
Except for Fairfax County overall, yes.
And we're still going for that bronze level, by the way, so silver. So hopefully target that this year. Other than that, I, that's all I got.
Remarkable meetings, you know, when we're trying to get that passed way back when people were worried about bikes. It was going to cost too much money. Yeah. Jen, were you ready or are you by the way?
I, I don't have anything I need to cover tonight.
Okay. A couple of things that are questions, but before that, the bike rodeo and safety fair was awesome. They were giving these out to little kids, which I thought was great. And I always need an extra blinky thing, so they were giving these out. I'm going to share those with one of my neighbors in the hood, one of the kid neighbors, not the old kid neighbors. We have a little one that wants to. We do have a request from the Committee for Dulles and I'm going to meet with one of the staff members and I'll fill in our town manager. They're asking for our support on talking to supervisors because there are some supervisors trying to change zoning fairly close to the airport. And the airport is huge. It's a hu, I mean, it just makes rail look like nothing. That airport is huge. And if we start doing things that are going to affect the flight times coming in and out, well, there's a lot of things that could happen. They could redirect flights. People in, in Loudon and Prince William are saying, "No, we're going to build all these single-family homes and apartments right in the flight path, so you've got to change your flight path." So we don't want it coming our way. So I'm going to talk to them in the next week and then I'll get with the town manager and see what we could...
Didn't Dulles just release their latest analysis on the traffic counts? About, I want to say about four months ago, five months ago?
It hasn't changed.
Like the...
Right. I know Dana was attending, Dana attended a meeting. Yes, I think they did, but I also know that, I have heard that there is some pressure continuing.
Yes. Committee for Dulles have a document or like a standard resolution or something like that.
They're working on that for me and they're going to get that to me so that I can share it. And then I'm going to go out and meet with their staff. And they're also getting a legislative committee together, which they want me to be on. So airports go. We don't want it being like national. I mean, they shut off flights after ten o'clock. And, you know, we're doing all these international flights out here. I can't imagine us shutting things down now. Really. And, and you don't want to put your residential right around where those flight paths are because nobody wants to live there.
Well, it's only going to get worse. I mean, I read where Dulles is the only airport on the East Coast left with any expansion capacity.
So we do need to help them in making sure they don't screw up the zoning around it. Also...
Thank you, Committee for Dulles representative.
Yes.
So evidently, one of our businesses has a concern that they weren't told that it was an art district and they could have gotten money. So if you're an art business, is that when you're told? If you're just a coffee shop or a gas station, we're not going to come in and talk to you about art districts and cinnets, correct?
Aren't they? And there aren't a whole lot of cinnets, but aren't they for new businesses? Is this a new business?
New businesses, but...
I mean, if somebody were to come in and it was what appeared to be an art business, a member of staff would, would raise that potential. So I'm not quite certain which business.
Define art.
Well, they've decided to put art on their walls for sale, but they are not a art business. So we don't have all these little guidelines. If you're opening up a tobacco shop, you're not going to qualify for the arts just because you sell...
Have they gone and talked this down to ASCO?
It would help cigarette tax, though. I appreciate that.
They would get cigarette tax?
That would help us with cigarette.
So I don't...
I mean, they would have to bring it to our attention that they, in some way, related to the arts.
That they're thinking about doing, it was an afterthought after they got the business going. So that wouldn't have qualified because it was an afterthought.
And the, what, what are the provisions in there? What are, what are the gets for businesses?
You're, it's up to two thousand dollars in permit fees that you don't have to pay. So that might be your, your HPRB sign application, or it, it might be a building, some types of building permits. So it's really for business starting up.
So changing your model after you get in, you wouldn't qualify anyway? Okay.
There may be some if you come in for a, a refresh of, you know, your experience for HPRB.
I would just tell them to go and see Lisa and see instead of just guessing.
I thought it was for new, tend to be more skewed to new businesses.
Right. It's really to encourage that type of business.
That's what I thought and I was like, because I knew their business had not started out as an arts business. So, okay. And are we going to get an update on parking soon for the downtown development? Because a lot of people are...
There's nothing I can, we have letters of intent out that they're, we're trying to get out until they're consummated.
Wait until after all the HPRB stuff comes and goes.
Yeah, we need to make sure these letters are consummated before we can give, because we're...
So until we, we sign.
It looks really good.
Okay.
Things look good. That's, that's...
Basically, I...
On all things, for arts, current and it looks good. For, for parking, it looks good, but we have to wait till all that stuff is inked. Because Comstock's doing it on our behalf. They're, it's a real estate deal they're working on.
Okay.
It, but it's, it's been worked. It's been in the works for months, but...
Well, I knew that no one was waiting until the last minute, but I did assure them that you will not have to park at Reston Town Center to come home.
No, 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 no.
Draw out in the comprehensive agreement, it shows the proper...
You gave them a map and it has to be in this and it has to be right around the downtown. We have very distinct boundaries around it. It's got to be in there. So if you, if you really think it through, there is a whole lot, there is a whole lot to get a hundred and sixty-two spaces in that area, you can kind of probably figure it out.
I know, I know.
Well, and the, the only reason that it can't be shared is I don't even know the ins and outs of, of where it is. It's like we've signed a lease. We, until we sign a lease, we can't say...
That's what I keep telling people, but I just wanted to bring this up so that I can go back and say, "I'm done with you, Dillak Johnson. I've asked a question." And I know you're not going to have to park in Reston or at the high school and take a shuttle over here. So, okay, that's good. And the eightieth anniversary of Rotary's coming up.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
I thought of one other thing, sorry. Cindy Roder, is there anything we should know for her in the festival? Anything we can do to help? I know we've talked about it privately, but anything, especially with the new location. I know we've talked about just like getting people there. Anything in terms of, how that's different, like not as much, obviously, Ellen Street is not shut down like it was last year, but...
We're going to have gridlock.
Well, we'll definitely have gridlock and I've seen the signs on the gridlock, but anything we need to know? This is our work session.
So we start with traffic. So one lane, Perundah Parkway and Spring Street, the inside lanes will be closed during festival hours. Police will be managing the intersection there and the entrance into two hundred Spring Street. They'll have as much police presence between our officers and the sheriff's department as we've had in the past. So I think it's a more secure site in a lot of ways because we've had it on public streets. All of that's coming in. We actually will have more carnival rides than we had last year. They're adding a couple of rides. So no fear there. We have the new trail lighting segment that, that'll help with people walking and biking. Bike valet is bigger than ever before. All the vendor slots are sold out and with waiting lists. Two-fold stages of entertainment going all the time over fifty performers.
Now we just need the weather.
Good weather.
The low sound bites, Mary. Good weather. Isn't it nice to have the weather off your shoulder then?
I'm sorry about that. So it's on the...
They move the...
I didn't even get one corndrop last year.
I walked it, I walked it from the, yeah, just to test. I did a dry run.
I, I, I got the doc. That says something.
So I'm glad you shared that, like more carnival rides and what was it, the thing that you said? That the bike valet is bigger than ever? I think those are things that when, because there are still, we're going to hear, "Oh, it's different." And those are good things that are, that are happening because of the change, so.
Fifty performers. They all want to know where they can go. That's the breeze and jimmies and that. They need to learn about some of that business part and what options.
Well, and I do know that, that Moonboy Chicken is doing a big push on social media that they're going to be open on the weekend, starting that weekend. So I did notice the netting across the medians of Spring Street to try and keep people darting across.
Yeah.
And they will be ticketing at those other parking lots, so people shouldn't be, or no, they won't be ticketing. They'll be towing. So, but they'll have signage on.
And just a one other comment in all this, Tammy's folks have been working their butts off down there to get their stage and ready and, and they are working hard.
Thank you. So general people or you people?
General people.
You guys will get the shuttle for the garage.
For sure this weekend.
Yes.
They need to, they need to read the signs carefully because if it says private parking or they haven't, they really shouldn't risk it. They should use the shuttle less from Paraton, World Gate Drive or from the high school. Certainly there's more parking available at World Gate, so it's going from there.
Or they can park downtown, ride their bike to the festival, come back and go to jimmies and the breeze.
Also, yeah.
Lots of way to be parking at my house.
It's going to be great.
Yeah, I think so.
The only thing I was going to mention is just the Memorial Day observance on Monday at ten AM at Chestnut Grove Cemetery. I'm once again in the position of, do I hope that my daughter's soccer tournament goes to the final game, which is at eleven o'clock in Maryland on Monday? Or do I vote? So if you see me at Chestnut Grove on Monday, you'll know my daughter's student at the finals. So, Mr. Town Manager, what do you have for
I, I understand there were some Wi-Fi issues here earlier this evening. Paige came into my office this morning and told me, "Make sure you mention tonight that Wi-Fi is ready to roll out at the community center and next we're going down and fixing HMC and upgrading the council chamber." That's where we're going to be doing next.
There's Wi-Fi at the main center.
There will be.
It's, it's...
Watch, ready.
It's live. You're still testing the PC tech because of the, the walk fitness, but it's reaching everywhere.
So should we wait to get on social media about that? Like wait a few days or is it ready to let them ask?
Just a couple of days, just to be certain.
So that's just something we hear about. So it would be more...
After tomorrow, we'll start promoting, the final testing I think is in Wednesday. So after that, we'll start.
Okay, so we'll wait to see.
Starting the word. If you come in, you can...
Can I just say one thing about that real quick? There are people who are very happy about that. I will, just, they're just ecstatic. You know, I've just gotten...
Thank you.
I, I've heard more about that in the, I, they told me before I did, but yeah, they're very happy about it.
And I want to comment Paige because he went out and looked for a partner under some Virginia contracts to then do it for us and, and handle all the management of it. And it came in at a much, much lower cost. It made it much, much more approachable for us than it had been here before. And so he did a really nice job.
That building's not easy. It's got slabs of rock.
Four-hour firewalls and two-hour firewalls make it hard to penetrate a regular thing.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just put it that way. One other thing, or a couple of things is John Casella. This is his last week. We will be holding a reception for him in my office Thursday at eleven o'clock. Feel free to drop by for some cake and wish him well. Is the new Assistant City Manager of Safford, Arizona. And Memorial Day, I'm going to be taking some R and R down at Delaware Shore. So I'll probably leave sometime Friday and then be out and I'll be back in the saddle on Tuesday morning. And finally, you know, there, there are some rare times where, in this job, where you have a moment of just great pride and it just makes it overflow. And last Thursday, I was able to attend an event down at Eagleback Arena at the Shaw School of Policy and Government. And I got to watch Amina walk across the stage and get her master's in public.
Why aren't you at the beach?
I got back last night.
Okay, cool.
And she's back at work today.
Congratulations.
Make sure you know all that. That's good.
That's one of those moments.
Amina, congratulations. Yes, that's huge.
That's it.
Thank you for going and everything.
I forgot. I had this and it got hidden in all the rest of my papers. There's a magazine called Virginia Living and the best massage therapist is in her name. The best bicycle shop is... The best bicycle shop is The Green Lizard, number one. And coming in number two for best art gallery, only behind the torpedo factory, is Art Space. We feed up Grace in Reston.
Take that, Reston.
Three of them, three, right here.
Okay, so for bragging on Hurden, one of Rossin and Business Journal named only one company in the town of Hurden as one of the best places to work, and it's Excel, which happens to be down by my husband's. So I'm very proud of it.
Oh, I was like, really? People like working for you? That's crazy.
No, I'm super proud of it, so.
We just had a company go onto the Fortune five hundred.
Yeah. Four hundred something, right?
Oh, yes.
Get them roofing.
Yep, they have been...
They're bigger, they're bigger than Booz Allen right now.
Wow, yeah, we visit, Dennis and I visited them several years ago. They're all over the country.
They buy roofing companies around five hundred. They buy roofing companies around the country, and it's, it's...
Probably, many of the roofing companies that you've heard of in any state you're in probably is, they're probably the umbrella company for them, because they have different names, but they're billions of dollars.
Yes, six point two.
All right, so it's rocking here in Hurden. Anything else, anybody, before we have to go back into closed session to finish up what we were doing beforehand? So once again, I will ask for a motion to go into closed meeting under section two point two thirty-seven of A eleven A. One code of Virginia should discuss a specific public employee of the town relative to annual performance review. All of the favors, say aye. All right, it's seven fifty-five, we'll take a quick break and come back to our...